Good evening. Before we begin our meeting this evening, Connor Fisk, a senior student at Destrehan High School, would like to offer a moment of reflection, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Ellis Alexander. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Jesus, we turn our attention and our focus towards you right now because we believe that you're worthy of our thanksgiving, our worship, and our devotion. Jesus, we thank you for everything that you've done, everything you're doing, and everything you're going to do on our behalf. Most of all, we thank you for your sacrifice and for your blood, which miraculously washes away the sins of the world. We thank you for your love manifested in that while we were sinners, that you would die to have a relationship with us, and that you would take our pain on your own body. And so, we take this opportunity to worship you for who you are, and we say that we need you, God, and in all things, we declare dependence on you. I ask in faith that you speak to every heart and every mind in this room. Let every person feel the touch of your loving hand right now. Heal every sickness and disease. Remove all pain now, Lord, according to your grace and our faith. Mold us according to your word and according to your pleasure. Bless these people and give them favor. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for everyone.
Thank you, Connor, for that wonderful moment of reflection. Connor is no stranger to this board. He's been recognized numerous times, and in fact, shortly, he'll be recognized again during our Board and Superintendent's recognition. This meeting of the Board of St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, November 14th, 2018, is called to order. Good evening and welcome. We have all eight Board members in attendance, so Madam Secretary, if you would please note that for the record. Also in attendance this evening is Superintendent Felicia Gomez-Walker and Shelley Babino, the Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent. First item on the agenda is Item 2.01, Board and Superintendent's Recognition. Before we actually announce the recognitions, I'd just like to say on behalf of the school board, congratulations to the students, employees, and teams that will be recognized this evening. We give thanks every day, every month, especially the month of November, Thanksgiving month, and we are truly thankful to you for being outstanding representatives of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. At the end of the, at the conclusion of the recognitions, we'll take a short recess for those of you who would like to leave to do so. And again, congratulations. Thank you.
Students. Honville High School students were named to the All District Cross Country First Team. Alexandra Oakwann. Madison Araby. Beau Malasaw. Destrehan High School student was named to the All State and All District Honor Bands. Connor Fisk. High school students were named to the All District Honor Band. From Destrehan High School, Gabrielle Abate. Honville High School, Colin Marias. Erin Hicks. And Elena Simon. Destrehan High School student was named the Best Drum Major in Class AAA and the Best Drum Major Overall at the Louisiana Showcase of Marching Bands. Casey Wagisback. Destrehan High School student was named to the All District Cross Country First Team. The student, Jordan Terrell, would not, is not able to make it here tonight, so she's being represented by her brother, Ty. Employees. Destrehan High School employee was one of three individuals in the state recognized as a 2018 LMEA Outstanding Young Music Educator. Christopher Williams. Satellite Center employee was awarded a Brown Foundation for Service Learning Projects Grant for $6,974. Craig Howitt. Teams. Satellite Center's Health Science Pathway was recognized by the American Cancer Society as a Top 20 Influencer of the 20th Annual Making Strides Against Breast Cancer of New Orleans. Here tonight, we have facilitators Denise Robichaud and Renee Labott, along with several team members. Honville High School's Tiger Bots Robotics Team 2183 received a grant from Energy Waterford III for $10,000 and a grant from the Monsanto Fund for $5,000. Coach Tyler Dufren.
We're back in session to conduct the business portion of our meeting. Item 3.01, Minutes from the October 22nd, 2018 Committee Meetings in October 24th, 2018 Board Meeting.
Sorry about that, jumped quick. Move approval of the minutes of the October 22nd, 2018 Committee and October 24th, 2018 Board Meeting?
Second. Motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote. The next item is Item 3.02, Resolution for Shell Sponsorship of the Dr. Rodney R. Lafont Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund. The resolution reads, "Whereas the Dr. Rodney R. Lafont Performing Arts Center is a world-class facility that magnifies arts education and elevates the social culture of our community, and whereas the center is a venue for diverse performing arts programming, collaborating with artists, and engaging students and community members in the creation, appreciation, and understanding of the arts, and whereas the school board desires to establish a sustainable funding source for the supplemental operations of the center, and whereas Shell Narco Manufacturing Complex has committed to contribute the sum of $5 million over a six-year period to the St. Charles Parish School Board for the establishment of an endowment fund for the purpose of generating a sustainable funding source for the Dr. Rodney R. Lafont Performing Arts Center, and whereas, as a condition of the gift, the school board agrees to grant the name and rights of the theater located at the Dr. Rodney R. Lafont Performing Arts Center. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, accept the sponsorship and conditions as outlined in the agreement."
Move approval?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I got my hands on this contract today for the first time. It's a 20-page agreement, and I have many questions concerning this contract. Among them is the length. Can we legally enter into a contract 20 years? I've never seen anything more than three years that we've entered since I've been on the school board. So, that's one of my questions. Another one of my concern is, at the end of 20 years, Shell holds the rights to continuing the agreement whether we approve it or not. So, I would like to speak with the attorney who drew up this contract or worked on this contract on our behalf before I vote on it. So, at this point, I'll make a motion to table this resolution until our next meeting.
Is any second to that motion? That motion fails for the lack of a second.
I have another question. How many board members have read that contract in its entirety?
I have. It was attached to the agenda item at Monday's committee meetings, and I actually reviewed it over the weekend.
I have a lot of concerns about this contract, and I think it would be irresponsible for the board to approve this at this point without us having the opportunity to have a lawyer that we can, that we can talk to about the terms of this contract.
Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Madam Superintendent, would you like to introduce our guest from Shell Narco?
Yes, first of all, I would like to say thank you so much for your generous contribution to this endowment. Tonight, we have representatives from Shell, Brian Patrick and Matt Adams. Gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you, acknowledge you, and ask you if you would like to say a few words. Thank you.
Sure. So, I'm Brian Patrick, and this is Matt, colleague of mine at Shell. And just on behalf of Shell, we want to tell you how much, how grateful we are to be a part of this. It is the most fabulous facility, and to think that we're going to have our name inside it is just so exciting. The folks at Shell, when we, when we first announced that we were going to do this, it was amazing to hear them all stand up and talk about how often their kids participate, and we're looking forward to using this, and how proud they were that we were going to do this. It is not often in the Shell system. You will find us having the opportunity to do something like this, and it's great that we're able, I told Matt, I am so excited that I'm even here to share this with you guys because it will be one, one for the making and for a long time. So, thank you very much, and we look forward to being a part of it with you.
Thank you. And Matt, I know you have children in our school system that attend Luling School.
Yes, ma'am.
So, they will have many benefits of this facility.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you both for attending.
Thank you, Brian and Matt. The next item is Item 3.03, Personnel Items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 12th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's strategic plan.
I move approval of the personnel items as presented to the Board Monday evening.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by a 7-1 vote. Madam Superintendent?
Yes. I'd just like to say that tonight, as an item on personnel notes, I officially informed the Board of my retirement effective July 1, 2019. This early announcement allows the school board to conduct a superintendent search, select the next superintendent, and provide for a seamless transition to new leadership in this district. Being the school system superintendent in St. Charles Parish is a privilege, and as superintendent, I will continue to be active, fully engaged, and present until July 1st, 2019. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Item 3.04, Expulsion Appeal of Student One, Student Number One. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute Title 17, Section 416, Paragraph C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, November 12th, 2018, at the request of Student Number One's parent to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number One and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee. Entertainer motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number One.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.05, Expulsion Appeal of Student Number Two. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute Title 17, Section 416, Paragraph C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, November 12th, 2018, at the request of Student Number Two's parent to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Two and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Two.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.05, Expulsion Appeal of Student Number Two. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute Title 17, Section 416, Paragraph C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, November 12th, 2018, at the request of Student Number Two's parent to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Two and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Two.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.05, Expulsion Appeal of Student Number Two. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute Title 17, Section 416, Paragraph C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, November 12th, 2018, at the request of Student Number One's parent to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number One and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee. Entertainer motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number One.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.05, Expulsion Appeal of Student Number Two. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute Title 17, Section 416, Paragraph C3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, November 12th, 2018, at the request of Student Number Two's parent to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Two and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Two.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.06, Behavioral Health Services for Students, Policy 1.24, Second Reading and Adoption. Due to the passage of Act 696 from the 2018 Louisiana Legislative Session, the creation of a new policy and procedures relative to the provision of behavioral health services for students during the school day is required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 12th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's strategic plan.
I move acceptance of Board Policy 1.24, Behavioral Health Science Services for Students for Second Reading and Adoption.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.07, Legal Services Resolution. In order to assist with school law and sales and use tax legal matters, the district needs to have additional firms available with extensive litigation experience and to offer expert advice. This resolution is necessary in order to comply with the requirements of Louisiana Revised Statute Title 47, Section 263, authorizing the school board to hire and maintain a diverse list of available attorneys when legal matters arise. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 12th, 2018, and aligns with Goal B of the district's strategic plan. I move approval?
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Oakwann. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.08, 2019-2020 St. Charles Parish Head Start Program Competitive Grant Application. The St. Charles Parish Head Start Program is seeking approval for its program competitive grant application to comply with federal guidelines and the Head Start performance standards. The St. Charles Parish Public Schools Head Start Management Team comprised of policy council members, directors, content area specialists, and school system administrators have approved the program competitive grant application. The St. Charles Parish Public Schools Head Start Program provides support and learning experiences for children from 3 through age 4 and their families to promote long-term positive effects on physical, intellectual, and social, emotional development. The program also strengthens the role of families as primary caregivers and teachers of their children through education and support. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum and Instruction Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 12th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal A of the Board's strategic plan.
I move approval of the 2019-2020 St. Charles Parish Head Start Program Competitive Grant Application. The cost of this competitive grant application will provide $1,669,912 in federal funds for 2019-2020. St. Charles Parish Public Schools will supplement the Head Start Program by $1,090,379.86.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.09, Accounts Payable for the Month of October 2018. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 12th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move we approve the accounts payable for the month of October 2018 as presented in the amount of $3,747,836.15.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Oakwann, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That brings us to closing items, beginning with Item 4.01, Standing Committee Reports. Any Chair of a Standing Committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee met on Monday, November 12th, 2018. There were three items in our agenda. Personnel items, behavioral health services for students, policies-
Personnel items, Behavioral Health Services for Students, Policy 1.24, Second Reading and Adoption, and the Legal Services Resolution. All three of these items were brought before the Board table this evening and approved earlier, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard.
Next, Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, November 12, 2018. We had two items in our agenda. For committee meeting only was an overview of district and school performance scores by Mr. A.J. Pathé, and the second item was the 2019-2020 St. Charles Parish Head Start Program Competitive Grant Application, which was previously approved this evening, and that concludes my report.
Thank you again, Mrs. Bernard.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Mr. Sufferin, if I may, under the Personnel section of the meeting that took place regarding the superintendency, first of all, let me thank Ms. Gomez-Walker for her service to this school district, longtime service to this school district. Ms. Walker has done an outstanding job as the superintendent in the district, particularly this school district has maintained an A rating throughout our tenure, and I think that we're grateful for that, and we are looking forward to carrying this on to the next level. Again, I want to express my thanks and appreciation to the Board for asking me to, again, this year, serve as Chair of the superintendent's search process. I have put together a team, which includes members of the staff, to assist with the search process. The search process will be pretty much the same as it was a few years ago when we conducted a search for Ms. Gomez. There are going to be a couple of things that we will probably do a little differently than in the last search. During this particular search, we have a computerized component which will allow every citizen in St. Charles Parish to have an opportunity to participate in the search process by responding to five questions that will be posted online. The responses will be calculated in a Google format, and we will be using the responses to those five questions to develop a profile of the next superintendent for our school district. Again, during this search process, we will have a community input group. That community input group will consist of perhaps 30, maybe 40 individuals. Those individuals will come from the business and industry, from the central office, the Chamber of Commerce, the clergy. Principals of the year will be a part of that group. Retired teachers will form a part of that group, as well as students from both Destrehan and Hawnville High School. And the Teacher of the Year will be a part of that. Additionally, this year, we are going to add another group to that committee, and that group would be students who make up the superintendent's advisory committee. Those students will be added to that group, and that group will provide us input that will help us to further develop the profile of the superintendent, the next superintendent for St. Charles Parish. So once again, we will be providing you with information, with timelines, and all of that information as they are developed and as they are ready. We will be providing a news release to the press as soon as we get the process underway and get the process going. Finally, I want to say that this will be a national search. During the last search, we did a regional search. This year, we are going to do a national search, meaning that we will be looking at candidates from across the United States, and hopefully, we will be able to draw a real good cadre of individuals who can help us move this district to the next level. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Smith. Any other committee reports? The Finance and Audit Committee also met on Monday, November 12, and covered two items. Both of those items came to the full board during this meeting and were approved. Those two items were the Resolution for the Shell Sponsorship of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund and the Accounts Payable for the Month of October 2018. Item 4.02 Superintendent's Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a report on the athletics in our district. As far as swimming is concerned, Destrehan High School boys and girls swim teams were crowned individual and combined team West District Champs. Hawnville High School's boys team was the West District runner-up. The Destrehan and Hawnville boys and girls teams will travel to Sulfur, Louisiana for state competition. In volleyball, the Hawnville High volleyball team was crowned undefeated District Champions and advanced to the first round of the playoffs where they defeated Sulfur. The Lady Tigers then fell to Mandeville High in the second round of the playoffs. The Destrehan High volleyball team was District Runner-Up and advanced to the first round of the playoffs where they upset Acadiana High for the first-round victory. The Lady Wildcats were defeated by St. Joseph Academy in the second round of the playoffs. Both volleyball teams had great seasons. The Hawnville Highs boys took first place in the district's 75A cross-country and fifth in the region. The Hawnville High girls were District Runner-Ups and fourth in the region. Both the boys and girls teams competed in the state competition in Natchitoches, Louisiana, where the weather conditions were just horrendous, and you probably saw on Twitter or Facebook how one of our cross-country girls actually helped another girl in the race, and it was very heartwarming. The Destrehan Wildcats finished the regular season 9-1 and were crowned district 75A champions. The Wildcats are ranked second in the state, and they defeated 31st-ranked Hammond High School in the first round of the playoffs. Destrehan will now travel to Algiers to face 18th-ranked Landry Walker this Friday night. The Hawnville Tigers finished the regular season with a 5-5 record. The Tigers entered the playoffs ranked 22nd and defeated 11th-ranked Walker High School in the first round of the playoffs. The Tigers will host 6th-ranked Zachary High School this Friday night. Good luck to both teams in the second round of the playoffs. The school system is reaching out to persons who can support the success of a student by mentoring. Mentors are needed at both of our high schools. Mentors must be at least 18 years old, make a one-year commitment for approximately 30 to 40 minutes a week, and believe that you can make a difference in a student's life. For more information or to sign up, please contact Dr. Alice Cryer-Sumler at 985-785-7214. After this Thanksgiving break, the school system will be conducting a survey to set priorities and seek input to develop the 2019-2020 school calendar. The results of the survey will be shared with the Calendar Committee. We appreciate your input. The Board meeting in December will begin at 5:00 p.m. And finally, in observance of the Thanksgiving holidays, schools will be closed Monday, November 19, through Friday, November 23. Classes will resume on Monday, November 26. On behalf of the Board, myself, and the entire school system, we would like to express our heartfelt thanks to the families and community of St. Charles Parish for support of this school system. We're wishing you a happy Thanksgiving, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. You mentioned athletics, and you touched on the Hawnville-Zachary football game schedule for this, Frandi. I just want to point out that that game will be televised as the game of the week by Cox Sports Television.
Great, thank you.
So those that can't make it out to Tiger Stadium, they can still pick it up and watch it on TV.
Move adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakhan to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.